Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is regarding the Stanford general use permit. In late 2018, the county approached the needs of Attic Menlo Park, EPA, Woodside, the Gulf of LA, Redwood City, and advised that the county had been invited to the negotiating table with the county of Santa Clara, and there were discussions with Stanford regarding their application. The county invited jurisdictions to begin a collaborative process to provide some feedback and comments on it. After a couple of preliminary meetings, each jurisdiction was asked to provide some specific feedback. We provided a vote, let's have about four items, which are in your staff report, and those have been checked with the council prior. And basically, it was related to, you know, transportation issues, traffic congestion, contribution to bike ped, drainage, and then some in lieu housing, just in case there's academic housing that's property bought up in the town. The county has asked that at the ad hoc level, there could be a council member or two to be appointed, so the mayor's been asked to appoint two members of the council to serve. One is primary, one is liaison, but both can actually participate. And so I put it on the agenda tonight, just for additional council feedback. You may have noticed in the paper, and there was a letter from, an email from Mike Callagie, that being at the table is now kind of in question, but there's still the opportunity to be a participant in the advisory committee at the county level. So I think our process should at least continue with that expectation. That includes the staff report.
Okay. Any questions for George on this item? I know that there was, there were a lot of links that you gave us.
Yes, a lot to read.
Yeah. So just a little comment. I attended one of the first public hearings that the supervisor had, Josephine, over a year ago now, with Palo Alto council chambers about it, when a lot of the residents came and spoke. There's just a huge concern in the area that the Stanford University is overbuilding to tax all the services and housing and traffic, and so it really is a big issue. But in lots of ways, Stanford's like the family down at the table who wants to put this way around, so.
So I think, I didn't see the map in your packet, but for those of you who didn't go to the website, I guess there's a, there's a map that shows the areas that may be affected by land acquisition, covers essentially is a six-mile radius, and where they can acquire land, much like they're doing down in El Camino, and building housing, and it'll be non-taxable.
I don't know that they're just acquiring land, this is land that they own already that they have leased in fifty or hundred-year leases, and a lot, I mean, I actually owned a home in Menlo Park that was on Stanford leased land, and I sold it a number of years ago, but they're not in the habit or in the mindset of renewing some of these long-term leases that are starting to expire. They're going to take them over, and they will literally take over the asset.
Yeah. And then they'll use that for housing or other types of activity and not pay any taxes.
So do we know if there is housing in Atherton that is owned by Stanford? Do we have any, do we get any record if there is housing that is basically tax-exempt in Atherton because it's owned by a nonprofit?
Yeah, that's part of our annual property tax report from HDL, so we do know that, but I don't believe there's any from Stanford.
Most of it is along like that Bay Laurel, San Francisco Creek area, and then further up in the.
Some in Redwood City.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, clearly there'd be an impact if Stanford were actively acquiring property in our town and removing it from the tax rolls because it would have an impact on us and on the county. But frankly, I think the real serious impact here is exactly the same impact that we have with Menlo Park and Redwood City, which is development on our fringe that has a big impact on us in terms of traffic and mostly traffic, but just basically growth that impacts us. And this is something we've talked about a lot, right? Really haven't, I mean, I know we're gonna do a goal-setting session in the next couple of months, and that, you know, this is something we should focus on, but obviously, we're in a tough position because we don't really have leverage.
Well, there's another issue is the schools. So we have, the school districts aren't sitting at the table because they're asking jurisdictions. And so our residents will be paying for expansion to schools for children who are living in non-taxable apartments and homes.
And I know one of the requests, I think it's Palo Alto that could have been from Menlo Park, is for Stanford to build another school, or maybe a school at a couple of different levels because of that impact.
But there's the issue, I think that there's been some sort of agreement for that area down on Menlo Park on ECR, where they're gonna put, I think, four or five hundred home, or four or five hundred apartments.
The Ariaga Development.
Yeah, it's being.
Right, right. That's Stanford land, and Menlo Park tried to require more housing, and a lot of people feel that they didn't get enough housing on it, but I mean, it went back to the drawing boards several times.
And there's some agreement about tax and property tax, whatever the property tax would have been, Stanford's gonna contribute.
There's a one-time, one-time fee, yes.
I don't know if the county knows the answer. The Stanford's general plan, they've been working with the county for the past ten years, probably in modification, which is a huge general plan, it's moving a city, and I don't know if you guys have any, you know, kind of insight from the county perspective on what potential growth considerations, because transition of leasehold interest land is something that I know has been on the options table, but I know the development component is pretty much closer to the Stanford campus component.
Yeah, isn't it okay if I speak from here? I don't know if.
Yeah.
My involvement in this process has been reviewing their general use plan, which is really their traffic studies that are associated with developments. And our, first of all, we've been a little bit at odds with Santa Clara County because we haven't really been included in the process. They've taken our comments, but not necessarily addressed them to our satisfaction. So I went down to a planning commission meeting last summer and made that point to the planning commission. They claim that they will work with us on next year's general use plan, but their assumptions on their traffic generation numbers are just frankly unbelievable in our eyes. I mean, they're assuming no net new trips with something like nine thousand more students or employees on the campus. It's just, it's not believable. So we have made that point in all of our comments. I know that Mike Callagie and I believe Supervisor Don Worsley, I think, went down and met with Josephine about some of the issues that they're having with this, and I think your city manager, Mr. Rodericks, was involved in a couple of meetings that we've had, talking with elected officials about the negotiation on how much we feel this county should get in terms of mitigation, to mitigate for the traffic impacts that we see coming. I think that's, that's about all I know about that. George, do you have anything to add because you've been.
No, that's.
I had a question. I think what they're claiming is there's no net new commute trips.
Correct.
Is that limited to commute, or is that, I mean, because there may be an awful lot of traffic, it's not necessarily commute traffic.
So they do the analysis based on peak period, and so it's, yeah, it's during the peak, and they're claiming that their transportation demand modeling and their alternate methods of getting people around are going to have net, net new trips onto that peak period. I just can't believe it.
Well, and they're claiming, I had the same reaction, and I noticed that they're claiming they are on track with their current plan, which is also no net new commute trips, and I'd love to find out if that's the case, if they are tracking to their plan and if they have done what they said they did last time. Because it is almost unbelievable when you look at it, you add all these people, and it's not gonna increase traffic, just feels hard to believe.
They do have, you know, they have that Margarita bus system.
Right.
And those buses are, they didn't used to be full, and they are packed now. So I know that they're, and they've added new buses, and they've brought in a new subcontractor. So there are new buses, so there are new routes, but I do think that they've, currently they've got a pretty good network, and more and more people are using it because there's no parking there because they're doing all this construction, and they're not letting anybody park there, so.
Are the Margarites for commuters? I think it's more for kind of local trips, you know, from one place to another, rather than bringing.
It doesn't.
It picks up train, people from the train and brings them in.
Yeah.
That's not like, well, I guess that is a commute.
Yeah. Well, my, my wife works at the cancer research center, and she takes the Margarite from, from the train station to the hospital and then back. And so I know that, and as I said, that Bowhanan route is, didn't used to have anybody on it, and now it's packed. And so the Palo Alto one is also packed, and I think, I think they have a full-size bus now, where they used to just have one of those little buses. So I'm not saying that they've got it all covered, but I do think that, you know, I can understand where they're saying that they think that they're on track for now or for the 2008 study, but I agree with everybody that it's not.
I don't know. I go on campus fairly often, and it's really hard to find parking in those parking garages. They are packed. I mean, really hard to find parking. So it's, there's people, there's people on the road related to Stanford, there's no question about it.
And I don't know if it's the concept of making it torturous so that people get on bikes and walk, but there's, that's, you know, or public transportation, because driving a car, there's a risk. So.
Just one other thing I didn't see addressed in here is sort of a transitionary issue, but during construction, there's a lot of Stanford traffic, and I'd like that to be addressed in some form or fashion. Somebody should be made aware of that, see if there's any way to mitigate that, because that's been an issue, that is an issue today.
Yeah.
I mean, El Camino is, in many ways, a Stanford highway sometimes a day.
Yeah. And when they were knocking down those buildings, and when they start building, they're going to be, just like they are in Redwood City, having construction equipment in, in one or two of the lanes, and shrink everything down, and that'll last for a year.
Okay. I think our best opportunity, again, is to participate and leverage, is to participate with the county in terms of their ad hoc committee, including all of our own.
I could, two, two other thoughts for me. One is, if you look at the amount of areas, the twenty-seven hundred acres in Samhain County versus whatever it is, forty-seven hundred, forty, there's enough of that, and Santa Clara, Santa Clara County does seem to be getting the lion's share of the attention from any newspaper article I read or anything else. I'd encourage the county, Samhain County.
Well, I think it's Samhain County approval that's required, not, they don't, Samhain County doesn't have that leverage.
Well, that's right. My point is they're saying there's seven thousand acres involved, and some of it is in Samhain County, and some of it is, this is a general use plan that is, I hope, I mean, I just hope Samhain County gets our input in.
So I do gotta look out. So the, Stanford's permit is through the county of Santa Clara. Technically, Samhain County is not eligible for the mitigation money that they'll be collecting from Stanford. Now, I think for the project, the mitigation amount was like, it was like four hundred and fifty million, it was a lot of money, and Stanford has sued Santa Clara County over that fee. What we're interested in, more or less, is to make sure that Samhain County gets to participate in the mitigation measures that are resulting from this big development. Because like you've been speaking, that border was arbitrary. I mean, there's a lot of Stanford students that live in Samhain County as well as faculty. So to just limit the mitigation money into Santa Clara County is not fair to Samhain County, and that's part of what this group of elected officials and Supervisor Worsley and Mike Callagie are gonna try to go and argue. They have talked with Supervisor Semidion, and Supervisor Semidion has been very cooperative. He's a very sharp man, so we're hoping that we can continue those good conversations with Supervisor Semidion.
So the twenty-seven hundred acres in unincorporated Samhain County are completely unaffected by the development plan?
I think it's the part up by Searsville Ban. I know that's in the county, that area up there.
Oh, 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 oh.
I could be totally wrong.
I think there's land in the county, but I don't think that that gives the county any decision-making authority over the use permit. I think the use permit is totally a Santa Clara County thing, and that's why, that's what we read about in the paper. They're before Santa Clara County in order to get the permit they need to do the development they want to do.
Right, but I assume Santa Clara County can't approve a plan that directly affects a different county.
Well, I think, I actually think they can, and that's exactly what he's speaking to.
So they can approve construction in Samhain County?
Well, I mean, in Santa Clara County.
In Santa Clara, that's, that's the point.
About Samhain County.
That's the point, that's the question.
But the construction is not on the piece that's in Samhain County.
That's what he said, yeah, that I get, yeah.
I think that when this was brought up, the Stanford actually went to Samhain County as a courtesy to get them involved in the process. They didn't, they weren't obligated to. They actually did it as a courtesy to be involved, and I think to Jim's point, it's the mitigation measures, because even though the property that they're talking about, you know, primarily is Santa Clara County, is if it did apply to Samhain County, we would be directly impacted as far as involvement, so this is.
So it's exclusively Samhain County?
So it's exactly the same issue we face with Menlo Park and Redwood City, just at a larger scale?
Yeah.
Same issue, same leverage issue.
So my other point is going to the four, the four issues, which I thought were really useful, but we have, since probably the start of it, we've had a new conversation about our train and what we might be doing with the rail crossings, and that directly could affect transportation, you know, and I don't know whether we should fold that in any way or not. For example, I could see a scenario where we are doing something with the Desperate Trail, I don't know if the road's gonna go under the track, or we might do something. Yeah, that should be part of this conversation, I suppose.
With the town train, correct?
Yeah, and the train, the transportation company, that, you know, affects that.
Well, as you, as you, Mike, are working on the transportation committee, and you guys are starting to look at that issue, I think you should consider some of the information that's in here, and they should consider it too when they're thinking about, you know, do we need to mitigate some traffic or put in some traffic management devices on some key streets?
Yeah. Obviously, if we're gonna have, what it was, thirty trains coming by every hour or something, you know, then every increase in traffic is gonna just make it worse.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
And it's, it's an issue, and when I think about the impact on Samhain County from Stanford, I don't think there's any place that gets hit more than the Dumbarton Bridge and all of the streets related to it. I mean, you know there's loads of people going to Stanford across that bridge because there's so much housing in the East Bay. It's, it is very similar to how we're impacted by Menlo Park and Redwood City. It's just not fair.
So I would say that I'm supportive of the county's taking the leadership role, because actually, I'm very pleased with their efforts and their relationship with Stanford in general. This is obviously a money-related issue with Santa Clara County and a fairness issue on our part, because we do bear some of the burden. So, you know, an ad hoc committee, to me, sounds very reasonable to join with the county.
Any other comments? I think you can just give me an inform.
Jeff, you can let me know what your ad hoc committee will be, and I can share about the rest of the topic.
Okay. Great, no problem. So we'll move on to item number two.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Last year, you received a couple of reports regarding the Atherton Channel District, some of the challenges that it faces with regards to its finances. Just as a reminder, the district is encompassed of not only Atherton parcels, but some parcels in unincorporated county of Menlo Park. The town parcels constitute about fifty-five percent of the district, and we had talked about some potential financing options, and you had asked for additional information. We have NBS, Tim Supert, with us to help us go through some of those options for you.
All right. Good afternoon. Shall I sit and stand? What's your, what's your.
Whatever makes you uncomfortable. Both comfortable.
I'll have to stand for a minute, as long as it doesn't bother anybody.
No.
In talking to Robert about this, what I thought would be good is to literally condense a lot of information into just a few slides, and then focus on the three tools that I think are gonna make the most sense for this discussion, but I wanted to at least give you an overview, and when I'm done, actually, we just recently put together a booklet called A Ten-Step Funding Plan for Stormwater, so it's very sort of apropos for this discussion. So the most important thing is, people always wanna jump right to the final equation, you know, oh, let's do an assessment district, or let's do a fee, or whatever. You, you obviously know what's going on in your town, but I have to remind people sort of, you know, develop the priorities before you pick the tool, right? So the thing that is important in this discussion, though, is to recognize the difference between capital and ongoing services, right? So operations and maintenance is one half of the equation, the capital is another, and a lot of times, there are, there are different funding tools that work well for one or the other, not necessarily both, but there are some that work for both. So what, what we developed in the last couple of years is this ten-step plan, and again, I'm gonna focus on a couple of things, but just to make sure everybody's sort of on the same page, so to say, is when you're looking at stormwater, there, there are legitimate reasons to look at your other utilities, right? Sanitary sewer is also affected by stormwater when there's overflow and that kind of thing. So there are, there are reasons to look at that, I don't believe we're gonna really talk about that tonight. There are also development impact fees, which are one-time fees for capital only. So here's that, you know, that juxtaposition between one-time capital and ongoing maintenance. There's regulatory fees, which obviously are, you know, fees in the regulation of stormwater and other types of things, there's fire, all these different regulatory fees that are out there. The one that we will talk about, though, in a couple of minutes in more detail, is this concept of the property-related fee that you may have heard of, right? Erlingame has one, Palo Alto has one. They're fairly rare across California, but there are a few sort of examples locally. The GO bond, right, the general allocation bond, is an avenue for one-time capital if you get your voters to obviously approve a GO bond. The one we're gonna talk in more detail is the CFD, which is the Community Facilities District. It's basically a more developed version of a parcel tax, which is number seven on my, on my list here. So those are really, six and seven are very interrelated, they're sort of cousins, if you will. The San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority, which you're all probably familiar with, right? That was the Bay Area parcel tax, twelve dollars a year for all two million parcels around the Bay. So that's a parcel tax. The CFD is similar, and I'll get into some details on that in a minute. Then there's the Assessment District, which we've had in California since, you know, nineteen thirteen at least. There's the Thirteen Act Assessment District, Fifteen Act, there's all these different older laws that are for assessments and the benefit, and I'll talk about that in a second. Obviously, grants can sometimes be a source, but they're very difficult to get, and then of course, if you don't get any of those nine approved, you know where it ends up in is your general fund, which I'm sure is not a wash and lots of money, so. So that's kind of the ten, and I'm gonna focus again on, on these three areas, because as I understand, what you're trying to fund fits into these buckets more. If you wanna talk about, you know, a GO bond or something, we'll definitely, we can do that. But you've got the first, the first one on my list here, and not in order of priority, but just, that's the way it came up, is the Assessment District. So you have to prove benefit with an Assessment District. There's actually specific laws for flood control, the nineteen eighty-two act, right, is a benefit assessment district. It's used all over the state for, for flood control and related measures. But you have to show benefit, and you have to look at a lot of different criteria and do what's called an assessment engineer's report, and you have to separate out the general benefit and only assess properties for the special benefit. And there's an art in science, yes?
So I don't understand that. Are you talking, we have an Assessment District here, right? This is, the Channel District is an Assessment District, was established by state law, and there's an opinion from the Attorney General about it that preceded Prop thirteen.
Right.
And, and it authorized a bond, and we never did the bond. So, and then it got repealed by Prop, that all got repealed because Prop fourteen replaced it. But we, I mean, I'm just not, what I'm confused about is whether you're talking about a special assessment is in the context of this Channel District existing, or are you talking more generally, you know, to address need?
There's a difference between, yeah, the Channel District is a, is really a special district, so it's like a town or a county, so it's an agency of government, but the, the Assessment District I'm talking about is the actual financial tool. So whether I'm the town of Atherton or I'm the Channel District, I may have a credit card in my wallet, I may have cash, I may have, you know, some other kind of funding, that's, that's what this Assessment District is.
Right, okay, so that's what I'm trying to understand. So to leverage the assessment, the special assessment that you're talking, from the Channel District, that would be, that wouldn't necessarily apply to all of the parcels that make up the Channel District, it would only apply to those that would get a benefit as a result of the assessments.
Correct. Yes. That's the way they typically work, and I know there was a question that was circulated about what if, what if I sequester all my stormwater on my property and I have percolation ponds, or I have that kind of thing. Those things can be brought into the equation here, so let's say you have exactly equal parcels, you have an acre here and an acre there, this one is all completely covered in asphalt, creates a lot of runoff, and this one has, you know, different types of ways to sequester the stormwater. There may be a reason then to tax this property, you know, a hundred dollars, and this one zero or ten, or whatever, you know, the metrics might be. So there's ways at, looking at it, but you're talking about benefit.
So that requires a parcel-by-parcel assessment in terms of benefit?
It does, yeah. You can do categories, you know, and group together, and maybe you look at impervious area, or, you know, different things without getting, you know, extremely detailed on each and every parcel. Does that make sense?
Can I just follow a question on with that?
Sure.
Because what I'm hearing you say, that that would go beyond the physical boundaries of our current Channel District Assessment District, because, you know, I've got, I'm not in the Channel District, I don't think.
I think you are.
You think I am?
Yeah.
I'm sure you are.
Because it's, oh, right. But you're not, yes, you are.
We'd have to have a discussion of the boundaries. There's a, there's a separate discussion, yes, about the boundaries, but you wouldn't be able to assess properties that are outside of your area without some kind of agreement or what have you. The town could, in theory, have an Assessment District town-wide, and even though not all parcels are in the Channel District, but again, that's a different conversation.
But the real, the real question is, could the Channel District have an Assessment District-wide, so every parcel in the district gets assessed?
Within, yes. I mean, as the, as the board of that district, you can assess in your, in the Channel District, or if you're wearing your town hat, you could do it town-wide.
Okay. Then I'll take that, my, excuse me, my little example, if I'm in the Channel District and you're gonna assess me, but my property has all the bells and whistles for retaining all of my water that comes onto my property, it doesn't flow away, it goes into my giant detention trench, and, you know, it's all hard-piped in there, so I would pay less.
No exemption.
Yeah, so you and your, that's where, you're doing a parcel-by-parcel analysis, right? And so I think that you're gonna find, to follow up on Elizabeth's comments, over the last ten years, we've been telling people, you do anything, you gotta put a retention pond in.
Yeah.
Big ones, that cost hundreds and hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars, people complain about it all the time, okay? And now we're gonna say, oh, by the way, you're gonna get a chance to pay an extra tax, too? People are not gonna vote for that.
So the, the, the theory is, either if we have town-wide drainage projects that are, that everybody benefits from, if we wanna create an Assessment District that's town-wide, we do the engineers' report and all that, but we have to identify the specific projects in order to establish a budget from which to draw the assessment. But if we're just talking about projects within the existing Channel District.
Different story.
That creates the project identification, which then triggers the engineers' report, which. which then triggers how much we need to assess each parcel in order to meet that target for the budget, the projects, correct?
Right.
Because if you're doing a, Elizabeth, I think the point being that if you're doing it based on flow, or you're in an area, your property may be the better one of the bunch. But yet downstream, there are other issues that are created by water that continues to go on as well. Therefore, you could benefit by not having water in the rootway at El Camino and Alandra. Therefore, you receive a benefit.
I have a river that runs in front of my house when it rains, and it flows to El Camino. It literally is, and it's four feet high, and then it goes away.
In an engineering perspective, what is the, I mean, 'cause I know that we've done impervious areas analysis to determine area of impact to the channel. Is there any other engineering philosophy that we could look at other than just a blanket townwide? Because a townwide may not, 'cause the way the town's divided, a portion of this doesn't go even anywhere near the channel. Is there any other?
Well, I I think you can look at the different drainage areas and drainage basins that go to, you know, some stuff goes to the Atherton Channel, other stuff goes the other direction towards Redwood Creek. For example, we have issues in Lloydton Park, for example, that are not tied to the Atherton Channel. And so we have townwide drainage issues that were identified in the drainage study that was recently completed.
The master plan.
The master plan that has that whole list of drainage priority projects. And so you can either look at it as a holistic townwide approach of addressing townwide drainage issues, or you can cut it up into individual drainage areas and apportion it to those areas.
So if we did a townwide component, doesn't it nullify the special, the applied specifically to the Atherton Channel? Because fifty percent of it wouldn't apply to the Atherton Channel, we'd have to dissolve, in essence, this existing.
No, you don't dissolve. You don't have to dissolve it, you'd just be an overlay on top.
So an add.
Yeah. But that might make more sense than as a parcel tax, or a drainage tax, or something, other than an Assessment District, right?
So I'm deeply rooted in the history on this, and I don't know how much other people know, but I, but I've done a lot of review on it. And I gave Jennifer the Attorney General's legal opinion that was issued, I think, in nineteen fifty?
Fifty-eight?
Eight, yeah. We've, so, you know, there's been a lot of analysis, including our master plan, about drainage issues in Atherton, and we're divided into different areas where the drainage occurs. And there's been lots of information about the channel before it was lined with concrete, and the whole Sequoia District area that drains from Euclid and down on the other side of Stockbridge into Redwood Creek. From what I've read, those are the two big areas, and there are some other areas that are smaller. But those are the big areas. And the dis, the Atherton Channel District was created to fund the, you know, formalizing of the concrete channel, which had been just a creek. And you don't have huge flooding problems, but my guess is part of the reason you don't is because a lot of stormwater is pulled into the channel. And if the channel weren't pulled, if, if there hadn't been the engineering to pull stormwater into the channel, I mean, I, I'm not certain that you would be flooded, but, but not too far from you. The big issues, and there's lots of press on it, is from Elena to El Camino and between Atherton Avenue and Valparaiso. Those areas were just totally flooded, Park Lane all the way down. So my guess is you would've been hit. And there was a lot of benefit that was provided by the money that was spent to formalize the channel as a way to take all that stormwater. And the, the problem that I see is that before Prop thirteen, the Channel District received four hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. After Prop thirteen, that number dropped to thirty thousand. And it's now up to something like seventy thousand, because the taxes have grown since nineteen seventy-eight. But that difference between before and after Prop thirteen is a huge issue, and, and, you know, we suffered what, I mean, you know, there, we paid for a huge piece of the work that we did on the channel off Marsh Road from general funds, which means that there was a great benefit for some residents and no benefit for some residents, other than their, you know, their.
They're able to drive without falling into.
Right, I understand, so, you know, but still, there's probably some people that don't get a benefit from that. And, and now, we're, we've got these needs for the channel, and how, and we're looking at how do we pay for that? And I'm thinking it's, I mean, we should, that's a Channel District responsibility, and how do we get to the point of assessing people in the Channel District? And, and it's particularly complicated, because Atherton property represents slightly less than fifty percent of the parcels in the Channel District.
I think they said fifty-five.
Fifty-five, yes. So I mean, it's right around there.
But, but there, the reason that the Channel District was created by a state bill, and there's a code in the state public safety laws, or?
Health and Safety Code?
Health, there's a code in the South and Haiti code that establishes the, the Atherton Channel District because it is composed of different jurisdictions.
Are there parcels in Woodside that's part of it?
There's thirty acres in, so, so just sort of the highest level assessment of what's in the district. And it may have changed, because I may, there may have been some articles that came out that I didn't get. But at the time that it was established, there were thirty acres in Woodside, there was Atherton between Atherton Avenue and the southern Atherton County, uh, city line, and there was what they call an island between Watkins and Encinal, El Camino and the Trax. And that was an island of unincorporated property then. And there was huge battles with, with Menlo Park residents and county residents. The county residents were west of Alameda, and this was before the Marsh Road annexation. And, and the Menlo residents were between Atherton Avenue and Valparaiso. So Camino, De Loseros, that, that whole area, and, and also closer to Valparaiso, that would.
Like Frank's Lane and those other little.
In there.
Yeah.
And, and anyway, the history was tortured, and there were, it took years and years and years to get this thing settled. And ultimately, it got settled because the Atherton Council agreed to allow those residents, which I think was about two thousand acres, it was almost half of the district, west of Alameda, not to join it. And then they had enormous floods right after they decided not to join it, and they ultimately joined it.
Hopefully, you can assess them.
Well, they're in the district now, I think.
They're in the district now, but if we're gonna go ahead and make an extra assessment, if I remember the meeting that we had, he said it would be very difficult for us to impose an additional tax on Menlo Park, that they would have to vote themselves that time.
And that's, to add to the existing assessment.
There could be a combination of things, too, right? You could, it doesn't have to be only one, one tool, we could use possibly two of, two of these. Shall I quickly go through, 'cause I think it'll help to kind of compare and contrast these.
I'm very impressed, thank you for doing the, all that summary, no, I love it.
Insert it, but, but to put this in the context of that history, and, and this district is, I think.
Proposition thirteen created a lot of interesting, yeah, anachronistic stuff, because it froze things in time, right? So you have areas that have developed extensively since then, but they only get the tiny share of the tax. For example, you know, with fire districts, or water districts, or other special purpose things, where now they have a hundred thousand people, in nineteen seventy-eight, there may have been nobody there. So it's created a lot of sort of set-in-stone things. So anyways, Assessment Districts, we have to look at benefit. We can't just create like a parcel tax, and I'll talk about that in a minute. The way you approve an Assessment District is you mail a ballot to the property owners. So we don't talk to registered voters in this example, and it's a ballot process, it's not, I'm not an attorney, but it's.
But it's a ballot process, is that the two eighteen?
It's not an election. It is subject to two eighteen, correct? And you may allow basically ballots to everybody in that Assessment District, where you draw the boundaries, it could be the Channel District itself. And then you wait to get those back, and you tabulate them as a protest ballot. So you're looking for a no to get to a yes, if that makes sense. So you mail out a hundred ballots, and you only get three back. If two say yes and one say no, green light. If two say no and one say yes, red light, you can't form the district for a year.
I'm sorry, go back. What's, what's the concept of protest ballot? What is that referred to? How's it different from just a regular?
It's based on, one, it's the value of the assessment. So if you're assessed two dollars, and you're assessed one dollar, you actually have two votes and you have one vote.
So again, the protest, again, protest refers to what?
You, you are, you get a ballot, and you can choose to mail it back or not. You can say, I protest it, or I support.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's, it's a real sort of arcane.
And, and the failure to vote is?
Failure to vote is, it's, it doesn't really matter in the grand scheme of things, but if you, if you want it to pass, you want your proponents to mail in your ballot, because that's, it's literally, yeah, it's only ones that come back.
So I'm sorry, you mentioned this, but it's, it's weighted. Does that mean, let's say hypothetically, how many homes are there in the, in the district do we know?
Thirteen hundred.
It's weighted by the amount of the assessment.
By the amount of the assessment.
So if you have a two-acre parcel, then we assess a hundred dollars, and you have a par, a one-acre parcel that we assess fifty dollars, again, you have two votes for every, every one? As an example.
And it takes us a month to count a regular election with a thousand people in it, so this'll take, you know?
It's a Excel spreadsheet.
We've tabulated thousands of them, and you just, you have to barcode them, and you can, you can get through them pretty quickly, yeah.
But when you're sending out the ballot, do you, do you tell them you're being assessed because, and here's the reason why?
Oh, yeah.
And, okay.
It's a very transparent process. They can, the engineer's report would be on file here and on your website, and, you know, so people would, people would know what, you know, what they're asked to protest or not.
But we need, but we need to go out and do an assessment of each property. It can't be something as simple as, or can't be as simple as you have, you know, a two-acre versus a one acre. Doesn't it have to do with the?
It's a, I would call it a, a desktop kind of assessment. It's not like we have to go out and inspect every single property and, you know, measure out what kind of trees you have and that kind of thing. I mean, it's, you can look at impervious, you can look at size, you can look at slope, you can look at use, you can look at a bunch of different things, depending on what the exact assessment is going to be for.
We have to then develop that.
Yes.
Okay, and then, then apply it to each piece of property.
Correct.
And, and.
And we, you know, we've done it for large, large areas, right? You, you can, you can do it with different analytical methods. You don't have to, again, you don't have to inspect each and every property.
Well, I, I think about this in the context of what we did a couple of years ago on Marsh Road, because there we have a project that, let's say, it costs four million dollars, and let's say there was some amount that was in the Channel District account. I think we used a hundred percent of that, but the cost was more than the Channel District had funds. So if at that point, we had said, well, the additional three and a half million dollars, it's really not the responsibility of the town, it's the responsibility of the Channel District, so let's send out a ballot to the Channel District members and tell them what the assessment would be. And so that three and a half million would be divided between the two thousand members based on some benefit analysis, I think. And if the vote came back fifty percent or more against than in favor, based on the weighting that you're describing, then they, that would not authorize the tax, right? And in that case, then, what would, I mean, then, then they would have maybe liability if the road, if we just let the road cave in?
That, yeah, that's another.
I'm not sure, I mean, I.
Legal question at that point.
I'm thinking that there's, there, I mean, we felt a responsibility to take care of it, because the road was, we were told by engineers, the road was gonna cave in. And, but in reality, it might've been more the responsibility of the Channel District than of the city council. So we didn't really do that assessment, but looking forward, where we have issues that we need to do in the channel, we.
Yeah, Assessment Districts have done, you know, street improvements, water, wastewater, like neighborhoods that have been on septic that's failing, and they all wanna hook up to a source. You can do an Assessment District, right? Or you can do Burlingame Avenue, right? The redo of Burlingame Avenue, that was funded, a third of it by an Assessment District of all the properties along downtown Burlingame Avenue paid for. So it's, it really does a lot of, you can do a lot of different things, it just depends on, do you have that, you know, majority approval to do?
To which point, we would not, this would not apply to something, and we have a process to do beforehand versus doing the repair like a failure. We were reacting to a failure, we can't go back and say we want a.
No, this is a more proactive, yeah, definitely, it's a proactive approach.
And if we were to do it, then it would also cover Menlo Park and Portolo Valley and things like that, we'd be sending them all ballots.
Yeah, yeah, you'd do it around the district borders, yeah. And they would have that weighted vote.
Yeah. Because a lot of the water that goes in there is from all this new develop, a lot of the new development, or the development that has been done recently, maybe not current, current, but it's, you know, and it would just.
You mean residential development?
Residential development, and the development that they've done along El Camino. You know, it's, it's, there's medicine out of water that goes into those, those storm drains that go into the channel.
So just to put a bow on the Assessment District, again, I mentioned infrastructure, it can be used for ongoing maintenance, that kind of thing. Literally, everything from business improvement districts to, like I mentioned, Burlingame Avenue, streetscape, to infrastructure can be part of an Assessment District. Now, to kind of juxtapose that with a parcel tax, and a CFD is a, is a version of a parcel tax, there, you're not constrained to that exact metric of impervious surface or runoff or whatever. You, you come up with something that's reasonable and meets the goal of what you're trying to do. That could be a per-acre charge, that could be linear frontage. You know, you come up with a formula that's simple enough that you can explain to people, of course, and, and, and make sure that you're trying to get to where you need to go. Now, the important part of this, though, is that this doesn't involve that protest ballot that we talked about a minute ago, but rather, this does go to the registered voters. And at this point, we're having a sidebar, but at this point, in my opinion, it's still a two-thirds voter approval is required for a parcel tax. There's a whole bunch of constitutional amendments that have been floating around that, to drop the two-thirds to something lower than that, but they're, they haven't gotten traction yet.
Quick question. So here is registered voters. On the assessment, it's just, it's just property owners, so whether they're registered or not.
Right, yes, we're very different.
I'm sorry, so if I'm a foreign national, I live in China, I own the property, do I vote?
No.
With an Assessment District, you would get a ballot, and you certainly can respond, but with a registered voter vote, you absolutely don't.
Not a CFD.
You can't vote.
I'm stunned that you can, a foreign national can, can vote in any of these. I didn't realize that.
Well, again, an Assessment District is not a vote, it's not subject to the elections code or whatsoever.
That's right, that's the support thing, or the protest thing?
Yeah, it's literally, it's a, it's just a, it's an administrative process, it's not an election. So it doesn't matter, to my knowledge, it doesn't matter where you're from, you could be from Mars or wherever, you get a protest ballot and you fill it out.
Tim, through, sorry, through, the Atherton Channel District is a subsidiary district under the law, I think, not a, a basic.
Not an independent special district.
Not an independent special district. Does, do you know if it has the legal authority to be able to do a parcel tax, or things like that?
Special districts are unique, yes. We would have to double-check on if it has the authority to do a parcel. We would have to double check on if it has the authority to do a parcel tax. However, I'm almost certain, we don't have to check the legal box, that it could do a CFD, though. Which is, I know, kind of strange. But, yeah, the parcel tax is five zero zero seven five and it says cities and counties may do this, but some special districts have it in their authority.
And I don't know that today, we would definitely figure that out.
Yeah, but a CFD is, is, is definitely a possibility. Again, CFDs have been around since nineteen eighty-two, they're super popular, they're all, you know, they're all over the place.
And what about the new, the new one that's come up under the law, the I F?
Oh, the EIFD?
EIFD, yes.
That's an interesting one. I mean, that's a, that's an enhanced infrastructure financing district. I don't, do you know offhand how much, well, but you'd have to give up your tax increment.
Yeah, that's the issue is that, yeah. I mean, the tax increment that the district itself gets isn't very much. And you're not going to siphon off part of the town's taxes to do it.
We wouldn't want to do that, right?
There's been a lot of people, we're all excited about EIFDs when they came out. And frankly, a handful of communities can really leverage it because they don't get enough of that one percent. Interesting, East Palo Alto, though, gets like thirty-three cents of the dollar, so they actually could do something with it. But generally, most cities just don't get.
You can't get that schools anyway, so.
Yeah, and, and the schools can't participate, exactly.
Unless you have a partner that's willing to give something up.
Yeah. So CFDs, anyways, I mentioned all this sort of thing. So here's the one that's the kind of that weird one that lives in the middle. So if an assessment district is here and a parcel tax or CFD is here, the property related fee thing is kind of in the middle, right? And that's, again, what Palo Alto did, you may be familiar. They have a property related fee for storm drain, Burlingame has one, Rancho Palos Verdes in Southern California had one, they, they didn't renew it. But it, it's subject to approval by either the property owners or you can go to an election. So it's, it's really an odd sort of hybrid. You, if you, the important thing is you have to do what I would kind of jokingly refer to as an assessment engineering light process. You have to prove proportionality, but you don't have to prove special benefit, which is a higher legal hurdle to jump over. So in other words, you need to come up with some kind of ratio to, to apportion out the costs of the project, whatever that project is going to be. And have a rational method for doing that. And then you have this protest ballot process that's actually one parcel, one vote, so it's not weighted any longer. But you would, if you had a hundred properties in the district, you mail out a hundred ballots and you wait to see what comes back and they're just equal. Or if you don't want to talk to the property owners, you want to go to the voters, you could go down the, the registered voter vote, but there you needed two thirds. You're right back to where you started from. So the real reason to do a property related fee, in my opinion, is if you were going to mail out ballots to the property owners and you have a fair and transparent process, what you want to do, what you want to accomplish. And so that would be the, the vehicle to do it. And you obviously have to explain it and, you know, you have obviously a, an astute audience that you're talking to. And you, and you are in charge of that process because you're mailing the ballots. Just when you want to, you can send out the proper education and community meetings, whatever, you know, makes sense. So it's, there's, there's some nuances that we can discuss if you want to get real granular. But in, in essence, you, it's this, you know, mail ballot process or the voters. And there's a lot of different examples out there. And I did put on here Palo Alto that I already mentioned. But just as an aside, I don't want to get weighed down in legal discussion now. But if there was a reason to form like a county service area, because I know you're overlapping jurisdictions, the CSA could actually also try for a property related fee. But you'd have to create another district, if you will, a county service area. So it may not, maybe a nonstarter, but I wanted to at least throw that out there in case somebody was thinking about that. I think that is my ten, yeah, that's my tenth one. So I tried, I tried to cover most of the questions that Robert forwarded me, but.
I just have a question. I, I missed the difference between water supply versus environmental or regulatory needs. What is that differential?
So there've been some legislative changes in such, where some, there's a few people running around saying you can do a property related fee for storm water without going to the, to a vote of the property owners. There's been some laws changed. So in other words, you would treat it like water, sewer, trash. But for what I understand, your needs are, you're not in that bucket. So in other words, if we were, you know, a rural community and we pumped all our groundwater out of the ground and we were adding to the supply by taking storm water and putting it back in the ground, then you could put this fee forward as if it was like a water fee. In other words, for water supply. And that wouldn't need an approval process, you wouldn't have to go to the voters or the property owners. But for your purposes, I don't believe that's anywhere, there's a Senate bill two thirty-one and a whole bunch of stuff, but I think it's totally tangential. You may have heard about it because Salinas was slapped with a, you know, lawsuit, they tried to do this a few years ago, so. I didn't even want to get into that because it's murky.
Yeah.
Order of magnitude, have we talked about how much money we would like to generate? We looked.
Yeah, when we did the drainage master plan, we, one, one of these, we were secretizing about the projects that were within the channel district. Audit with like four to seven million dollars were, but I'm not sure.
Over whatever the time period back on the total.
Ross, it was the low hanging fruit versus and the high.
Those are capital projects, right?
And, and we're getting about eighty-four thou, about ten thousand dollars delta between where, where revenue is about eighty-four thousand and, and maybe it's about seventy-four thousand, seventy-three thousand or something.
Yeah, so I mean, the money's not there for major mining projects and that kind of thing.
Seventy-five thousand was for the water capture project, in fact, we do that.
And we only spend maybe, how much on the frog issue, maybe ten thousand a year?
We have two annual reports that we're doing, so that's about ten or fifteen grand and then, but we have.
Other projects.
Other things like, you know, we do cleaning of the channel and minor repairs, but we don't have the funds to do, you know, the, the channel's rather old and, you know, parts of it are starting to fail, you know, going to, going to get to the point where they're going to fail. We're going to have to start dealing with relining certain areas as time goes on. And so this was, you know, the, the idea is looking forward, how is it that we could fund both ongoing maintenance as costs go up as well as addressing some of those capital needs?
So you could, again, I mentioned earlier, you could do a combination of two things. And I know, obviously, this can maybe be complicated or you'd have, obviously, maybe some voter fatigue, if you want to call it that. But you could, as the town, put a parcel tax out there. You know, pick a number, seventy-five dollars a year per parcel or something for the ongoing maintenance. And spread it all over the town if there was a real nexus there. And then you could do a fee for just the drainage district to do some kind of capital that would have a period of, you know, repayment of twenty years or whatever, whatever it might be. So there is kind of a mix and match that you could, could do here. If you follow Palo Alto, they actually had a very interesting way they did it. They approved two different fees. One has a sunset because it's only first capital. And then the other one goes on, you know, longer for, for operations and maintenance. And that's what their Blue Ribbon Committee, you know, really gathers the input from the community and sort of tried to figure out what, what the community would bear.
If we, if we look at those two buckets, I'm still a little confused. Now I understand sort of the capital component, which is somewhere in the ballpark, seven million. Oh, sure. What's the operational, estimated operational cost over the course of the year? Is it less than seventy thousand dollars?
Currently.
Yeah, currently it is.
And if we did the, the additional projects, would it go up dramatically or would?
Well, one, one example would be if we did the water capture project, that maintenance alone would be about seventy-five thousand a year. Okay, and so it really depends on what other things get added in. You know, we're going to start entertaining the conversation of green infrastructure, what that looks like. And as we do that, there are costs associated with it, whether it's the capital cost, the irrigation on, you know, to, for plant establishment or the maintenance of the facilities that get installed as part of that, if the town were to take those items on. And so you have the, the routine costs that we're doing now, you know, clearing out debris from the channel, you know, which is what we're doing in our current maintenance functions. It's then, depending on what projects we implement, if those add additional maintenance costs or not.
Isn't this a little bit like, we're trying to be a proactive approach so we have more variable options? For example, like the channel, we could have, if we had something in play already, we could have been able to utilize funds because we had an analysis that said that this would be a potential failure, therefore we would have a pot of revenue. We have forty-six million dollars in that drainage master plan that, you know, we have no idea how to fund it. And the short term is, you know, seven million or such. But with more options on the table, it gives us more flexibility because the lead time to get to some of this revenue source is a year or more.
It's forty-six million in a, in a drainage master plan?
Yeah.
In total, but, but there's.
If you did everything all at once.
Yeah, but there's also an assessment as to whether or not some of that, we talked about, some of that may be the owner's responsibility as opposed to the homeowner's responsibility. So we need to do more refinement, but there's a lot of it that's, would be the town, like maybe at least thirty million.
I'm throwing a brat there, okay, yeah, you don't know.
Yeah, we did a culvert up on Bell Brook, right? A couple of years ago. And wasn't there in the last year, there, there was a culvert at Marsh? I know, I don't know if we've done that one yet, but.
At Marsh?
Um, I'm sorry, not on Marsh, on Walsh. St, in the flat area of Mulholland.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if we did that, but the, the property owner had complained about it and I know we looked at it. When we did the culvert on Bell Brook, did we pay for that out of general funds?
I think that was a remnant of the parcel tax.
Must be a.
So that, that's essentially general funds.
Must be a.
No, special, special.
No, but I, I mean, special tax was from the town as a whole versus from the, the channel district.
Yeah, we have history because we've been going to general fund for it.
We've been doing it under the general fund.
Yeah, we've, we've been doing it out of the parcel tax for roads and drainage treaters. And the failure of the parcel tax in twenty sixteen was, is a, is a big loss. It's a, it's a big loss. I mean, it wasn't something that was ever going to fund the forty-four million, but it really at least kept some of these projects going. Because it was almost two million dollars, one point eight million, I mean, just coming in for forty years. Anyway, so to be able to re, start something like that and have that additional funds, I mean, we really did an earmark for these kinds of projects. I think we need to think about trying to get that to the voters for that. But getting the two thirds is, is hard. And, because, because we got fifty percent, we just didn't get two thirds.
Now, one, one additional layer to that is with the Atherton Channel District, if you make an assessment and it's, you know, a hundred fifty, two hundred bucks a parcel, whatever that is, you're not going to get to those large numbers really quickly. So the way that you do projects are against the issue part or against it, yes.
Is there a time set if, in fact, you do a draw like parcel tax component, but dedicated revenue source towards drainage solely? Is there a timeframe of fifty, twenty or ten year, whatever? Is there, is that just in the language as a three?
It's whenever people will approve, yeah. I mean, you could be in perpetuity, it could be twenty-five years, it could be.
We have a perpetuity problem.
Yeah, I think it'd be hard to go to the voters, too, unless, unless we said, this is exactly what we're going to do these months.
Yes, and, and that, that's part of the education process.
So, so the purpose of this was first off to get educated, but then also to give some direction or how we would like to move forward. So I guess, what type of direction or comments are you specifically looking for?
I, I think that's correct. It was to bring the expert in the room to help educate around this. We'll come back with a couple of narrowed options and suggestions to move forward. You don't need to make that decision tonight.
I almost feel like we have a cart and horse issue here, though, because we got to figure out what we want to do. And are, are we shooting at a forty million dollar target over ten years? Are we shooting at a seven million dollar target, you know? And that, I think, would, I assume, have a big influence on what we decided to do.
We'll bring the drainage master plan.
I, yeah, we need to.
Narrow that list down for you and then we'll have an idea.
What's facing us in critical timeframes?
Yeah, we have a few.
We do?
Yeah, which we had to.
Probably like next week, given the weather, you know?
Has anybody taken the Phil Lively tour up with all the rain, remember?
Yeah.
Go, go up and watch the channel rage? Have you done that? We could go over to Steve Noshheim's house and stand at his backyard, right?
Watch our turbos move down.
And watch the tree come down.
Two frogs.
Any of us that ever tried to pound the sides of the ground here.
Oh, no.
Realizes, you know, how that water, like near your house, there's water's going to be sitting for till August or something, it'll dry up, you know? It's not going to purply, that's for sure.
No, it runs down and it goes into the storm drain on El Camino.
There you go.
And fortunately, it doesn't flood like.
And where do you think those storms are?
Like the fort.
Nowhere.
Big front.
Perfect, perfect.
Nice segue. Okay, so I think we should probably move on then to the.
Thank you.
Six or seven copies of that, so you're having trouble sleeping.
So we're now on level thirty, and, yeah. All right, and so just to let you know, we have one council member that needs to get to another board meeting. And we have another council member that has a personal commitment and is going to be leaving in twenty minutes.
Well, I'm not going to take any of his personal.
Unless you're.
No, I've got, Phil, I've got some personal.
You guys have, okay, all right, okay. So, so, but if people have to get up and leave, we still have three because we really want to hear what you have to say. But don't be insulted. They had a private.
Well, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Larry Patterson. I think over the end of last calendar year, I was the city manager in San Mateo. I have retired in December. I was the co-chair with my colleague of the staff advisory team, which supported the CCAG as Countywide Water Coordination Committee. And so in that role, the county asked me if I would continue to go out to the communities as we start to roll this proposal out and explain kind of where it came from and what it's about and what it might do for the county in the area of flooding and sea level rise and regional stormwater projects, which you've now had kind of a warm-up exercise for that with the previous presentation. The, what I'd like to do is cover a little bit about why the agency is needed. The key, key aspects of the proposal. If you have specific questions, I'm happy to go into more detail. Talk, talk about the startup schedule, funding of the startup, which is what we're talking about tonight, is just the effort required to establish the agency and what it's ultimately going to do and how it will ultimately be funded.
And then I'll talk, yes.
So as you're getting into the beginning, though, there was a ballot measure just a year or two ago, all the counties around the bay voted to fund, I believe it passed, to fund sea level rise. And so you could maybe talk to us about where that money has gone or is going and how that applies to the money that you're thinking you're going to raise for this project.
Right, and I, I suspect that was probably measure A, A, if it was a regional area. And so I'll, I'll come back and just talk a little bit about that because it fits into the same category as other potential funding sources through the state or the federal government. And that is that the county is not well organized to pursue that kind of funding because we don't, as, again, kind of pivot off of Tim's comments, we don't have a clear idea county-wide of what the program really needs to be. And therefore it's difficult. And when cities are going individually after projects, it's not the same as having a Santa Clara Valley Water District or a Contra Costa District going after funding. They have more weight, they can do more in Sacramento about forming and shaping the legislation than we can at this point because we're all operating kind of independently in a disaggregated way. So I'll come back to that a little bit, but it's at the heart of what we're trying to do with this proposal.
Yeah, what my only comment was, that there is money being taken out of our taxes and going into some fund along with money from every other county and somebody's spending it.
Yes, and a lot of that is bay restoration work, I believe. And with me tonight is Jim Porter, who's already spoken to you.
Hi, I'm Eric Capal. Eric Capal, I'm actually spoken to you before, but I'm on the advisory committee for the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority. This Measure A advisory committee, so if you have any questions, I could talk about that. But yes, so projects are being funded. This is for restoration along the shoreline, so that they're really focused on restoration along the shoreline. Wetlands restoration is going to help mitigate some of the sea level rise impacts. But as you know, that's not gonna be the only answer, there's gonna need to be a hybrid approach to addressing sea level rise.
And the proposal we're talking about puts us in a better position to pursue that kind of funding when we have kind of comprehensive plans in the county. I'll talk a little bit about where we are with the endorsements of this proposal, and then let me just summarize the action that we're requesting ultimately from the town. And this is just informational and formal media, but I'll describe what we're asking each of the agencies within the county. First of all, property impacts, and I think the staff report did a good job of describing just the magnitude of the property impacts that are really at risk with sea level rise. And we struggle with sea level rise because when we were talking about twenty-fifty or twenty-one-hundred, sometimes that seems like a long way away. But the reality is the impacts are gonna be significant. And the second vote being that the, the actual funding required for those, the kinds of projects that will be needed to mitigate the sea level rise and flooding issues within the county are very large and generally multi-jurisdictional, that don't conform to city boundaries very well. I think we've, as I mentioned earlier, we've been at a disadvantage in pursuing grants. Erica Powell has been active with some of the NYU projects in pursuing grant funding and deals a lot with the Corps of Engineers and others who will tell you upfront that it is better to come in as a county-wide program than it is as individual cities. The existing flood control district, which does exist and will become part of this proposal, is really county-wide, but it's focused in three primary zones. And Jim Porter would be in a better position to answer some of the specifics about that. But that's one of those pre-propped thirteen agencies set up in nineteen fifty-ish, and, and that it still exists and has ongoing work. And then, I think one of the things that's here, and I'm gonna, I really meant it, Robert's urging to add a little bit to this bullet that I didn't, and that is that we have, coming down to the local jurisdiction, significant requirements from the Regional Water Quality Control Board about stormwater retention, stormwater quality. And it's gonna be very difficult for each city to try to pursue what they need to do to meet those requirements within their own boundaries. And one of the, I think, opportunities with this proposal is to actually look at it again as a county as a whole so that these large projects could actually be counted as benefits towards some of the cities where it's not located, but actually participating as part of this overall program. And that's conversations that I think Matt Fabry's been having with the Regional Water Quality Control Board staff. I think the part I didn't add is that we went out and talked with the agency staff and elected officials as part of the development of this proposal. And one thing we heard at every meeting was, this needs to include maintenance because it is one of the most difficult things for agencies to do. And then just with the example that Robert gave, where it can double your maintenance cost just by having one facility kind of added in in terms of the added cost. And these facilities are not very well centered in one location, they're gonna be scattered around the county and have some special maintenance needs that are currently not within anyone's budget at the local level. The process we went through is, CCG set up a standing committee to look at county-wide water coordination. That committee then asked to have a group of staff folks get together and help develop the proposal. There are about eighteen members to that team, that was the one that my colleague and I chaired. And then we worked with the Environment Science Associates, CSA, to develop the proposal and also to coordinate the outreach to various agencies about what we were doing. The CCG board and the Board of Supervisors have now both endorsed the proposal. CCG did it at their January tenth meeting, and the Board of Supervisors had, I think it was the January twenty-ninth meeting. The proposal itself, you have, I think, copies that were provided. There's the proposal, and then there is the executive summary. And the executive summary being more graphic and kind of a summary, obviously, of things that are in the larger proposal. But those two documents were really the product out of the staff advisory team and the water coordination, countywide water coordination committee. Here's the basics of the proposal. One is that we tried and talked about a number of different ways of forming it, that the one that seemed to make most sense was to take the flood control district that currently exists and some of its functions would make sense within this new agency, and simply through legislation modify it. The modifications would include changing the governance structure. One of the things we heard back when we went out to the agency meetings was feeling that these functions really should not just be in the hands of board supervisors, but should be in a committee comprised, or a board comprised of both city members and, and county members. So there'd be two board of supervisors members, one of them from District Three, which would be the coast side, and the other five members would be four kind of geographically north, central, south, coast, plus one at large. Those would be appointed, elected officials appointed by the CCG board.
Would they rotate, or are they just permanent positions in just specific towns?
They would have terms, but, but there's, there's a balance. This work is going to be fairly technical, and one of the things that came through in talking about it is a need to have some continuity on this board. So the idea would be that members could participate for an extended period of time to try to bring that continuity into this process. But clearly, they would have set terms and would be sequenced so that they don't all expire at the same time. And I think the, that's a part of the, the detail that we'll still be working out if we can move forward with the legislation that is going up to Sacramento.
So Larry, just some feedback for you. We as a small town seem fine that we don't get any people on any of the big boards, all the big towns do. And we think that, you know, we pay our fair share, but maybe that should be changed. So I would encourage you, as you're making a governance, that there would be some rotation so that all towns would actually have an opportunity to get on it, and at least on a two-year basis. I agree with you, I understand, having served on other boards, that, that, yeah, you have to really know the process, and it takes a year or so. But honestly, Asserton and I hear it from my colleagues, you know, we get shut out of a lot of things where I think that we actually would add a heck of a lot of value, and we add a perspective, you know, representing some smaller jurisdictions, as does the borough and things like that. We normally don't get any of those positions as well.
Yeah, and I'll carry that back as we talk more about it, and we talk more about the specific of the legislation that would establish this agency. I think it's, I think that's been discussed by CCG, because it started off, I think, as a six-person committee, but then with an eight-person committee, and the two additions were small cities like Port O'Leary and Lewiside, I think, with a few that added in. And so the idea was that they had been kind of overlooked in the process and didn't want to be overlooked again. The coast side has the same issue. They're concerned that when you have Facebook on your shoreline, it's a lot different than having erosion on, you know, an apartment building in Pacifica. And so there is a real need to try to establish this. It was one of the reasons why the selection process was moved to CCG as opposed to the city select committee. With the original proposal, supposal was, what about using the city select committee? And there wasn't the sense that that was gonna provide that, that type of geographic and equity among the cities and the continuity that was needed. So, so that's where we ended up, and I, I think that message is clear, but I'll reinforce it when we go back and talk.
Yeah, and one of the other things in looking at the proposal and what you've put together in the staff report, you know, we keep approving more and more development right on the bayline, on the shoreline. We've been talking for years about sea level rise. When are we gonna have a countywide ordinance that says that if you're, if you're building on the, on the bayfront, you need to build your levy? Why, why do we allow, and, and, you know, and I would hope that this group would look into that, is to say, okay, we need to have an ordinance that says that if you're building a big Facebook, multimillion dollar thing, you need to protect your own, your area. You gotta, you know, contribute to it, because today, maybe that property is worth a million, but after we do all this levy and everybody else pays for it, now it's worth twenty million, okay? So they've been enriched by, by all the residents, and it's not, I realize it's gotta be a general thing, but at the same time, it also needs to be fair.
No, and I agree, and I think the, some of the conversation on that, first of all, if you're in a flood map, you, you, you have to meet requirements to be able to develop. So you're not free to develop down in the flood plain itself. You have to build above it, or you have to provide some other mitigation. It's difficult to have individual projects fund levies because levies need to be continuous and long. And, and for example, in San Mateo, we, the first levy project was done, and it, it had a whole variety of different funding sources. Seven and a half million was from an assessment district, but, but the total was probably three times that. The North Shoreview is about three times that as well. Well, there are no single developments that come in, a lot of numbers from Stanford being another issue, but to be able to really fund that kind of a project, so you want to make sure they pay their share, but you have to also recognize the broader community interest and blend it with some other broader funding mechanism, including grants, to try to get the projects done. But, but I think that when we talked about this concern, there's this concern about local control and taking land use authority away from the cities, and there was pretty strong messages back to us that wasn't what anybody wanted, but that they would like to have better information upon which to do the year's general plan so that, that this agency could, could say, well, you have, twenty-one-hundred flooding is likely to be within this range. Our recommendation to you as a town council is we recommend that you work with this number as the best estimate we have today, and then that could be updated as things move forward, but not to dictate where you can build and where you can't build.
Right, just one other, one last comment, and then we'll go with you. And so you, you did point out something that I spoke to our city manager about too. And, and, and I appreciate you bringing it up as opposed to me, but, okay. So we are going to have levy projects here in San Mateo County. Don't you think the water will come up from San, Santa Clara and flow us, or come down from San Francisco? This is more of a regional problem, which is why I think that double-A proposal that was gonna fund all these things, it was gonna have a, it was, it was marketed as, we're gonna build levies and protect from, as a, as a region, we're going to address the regional problem because it is a regional problem. It's not a county problem, it's a regional problem. And so, you know, metal parts will get flooded from Santa Clara if they don't do anything. And so I, I guess one of the things is that if you go through that, I'd like to understand really how all this stuff goes together, but, okay, I took up enough time so...
If I could, just a quick, quick answer to your, your comment is that, that today it would be very difficult to try to coordinate with Santa Clara County, given how we go about our flood control and sea level rise decision-making. The closest we have is the San Francisco Creek, which has some Santa Clara and some San Mateo involvement. But the reality is, we need to have our act together, much like Santa Clara County has with their Santa Clara Valley Water District. That's not what we're trying to duplicate here, but in fact, to have those conversations, or to have that same conversation with the San Francisco Airport, or to have it with San Francisco, the city and county of, we need to have the kind of organization we're talking about here to have a meaningful conversation and make any progress. That's kind of the thought process.
So my concern, and you touched upon it, is more relates to local control and local government. And I see a lot of things coming at us that are sort of these, in my view, unaccountable regional entities that exist or special districts that exist. And I do believe they're politically unaccountable, they're just, and they're making decisions for, for the towns. And then we've got other issues coming now with housing that will be required to provide, that'll be taken out of our control and stuff like that. And as I think about this issue, which is an important issue, one of the concerns I have is almost everything we do can be tied to sea level rise. You know, exhaling can be tied to sea level rise. And, and I worry very much that once we create an entity, it could, it has the ability to become this behemoth that just dictates control over everybody else pretty easily. And that it could happen despite everybody's best intentions because the mission is so important. So have you thought about, are there any steps in here that, that really constrain the ability of this group to make decisions? It says it'll be addressing permitting, for example, as an example on our... So I'd like to know what, you know, and I mean, real structural stuff to make sure that, apologize for blunt language, that we keep it in a box as opposed to letting it just grow to this thing that essentially usurps all our authority.
Well, the, the permit reference is really to assist cities in getting the permits because most cities don't have staff that deal with the permitting agencies on a regular basis. So it was more of an assistance to the cities to get the permits you need.
But more broadly, am I concerned, would you address that directly, please?
Yeah, and I, I think that, you know, if you think about it, some of the things we're talking about with regional stormwater are really being triggered by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and, and so...
So a good example is an unaccountable entity that, that has tremendous power, that nobody knows what they do really.
I didn't mean to single them out.
Suddenly you get a tax.
Yeah, yeah. So, so they, so they're, they're, and that's, just take the example of Regional Water Quality Control Board and what they're requiring for the stormwater quality and retention issues in the county, major projects. Oh, there's trash, the trash capture as well, tens of millions of dollars in San Mateo. I know we were gonna be spending on those kinds of requirements. So, so you see that stuff coming, that's not gonna stop. In fact, every time there's a permit issue, it gets more restrictive.
Yeah.
So what, what the proposal is, is to get prepared to represent the cities, not to impose on the cities as these regional requirements or state requirements come forward into San Mateo County. We don't have the ability to do that if we're not organized. The, the confidence and, I guess the confidence in the ability of making sure this agency's powers are not unlimited probably is the area of the way that the existing flood control district legislation is modified. And we're meeting currently, talking about exactly that, and there may be more information I could bring back later. But the, the thought is that, 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 since nineteen fifty, the flood control district didn't do what you're most concerned about. We're trying to start there and modify it so that the right things can be done, but not to superimpose an extra permit requirement or extra requirements on the local jurisdictions. In fact, just the opposite, which is to get staff available and, and be able to support them as they move forward and take a project into the permitting or the grant application process.
And this just might be, that's a real constraint, and Erica, Jim, I saw Erica, you were nodding her head. Is there anything you wanna add, or?
Let me take a wire there.
Yeah, please.
Because Erica's actually running our flood resiliency program. We've got three projects, we call them M.O.G. projects. One is Bayfront Canal, which your town is a partner in. The other is Navajo Sewell up in San Bruno South City, and the other one is Belmont Creek, which we just had a meeting on this morning. And the way we've been operating is, we truly have collaborative partnerships with the city. So we're all in this together, and Bayfront Canal, Robert is attending our meetings. All the cities that we work with are equal partners and provide feedback on the improvements. And I know you made it, and it's very ideal right now, right? It's, we're all working together. We'd like to keep that, that method of operating, if this district is created, for the projects that we'll be doing up on bayshore, for instance. And you mentioned, well, so these are very expensive projects. And part of what Larry is gonna get to in a second is, we're gonna try to speak as one county to be more eligible for federal grants, because right now, we're all competing against each other in San Mateo County for those grants. But there is local match, and it's, I'm not sure if this agency will have the revenue to provide all the local match. So we want participation from the people that are receiving, the people, the jurisdictions that are receiving these improvements to not only have input in the design, but be an equal partner because they're gonna inherit essentially this infrastructure and the improvements on them. And I'll give you an example. So we've been talking with Millbrae and Burlingame, because if you look at San Mateo, Coyote Point, Burlingame, Millbrae, SFO, there's a big area in there where there's no improvement. So Millbrae came to us and said, we'd really like to see some more pedestrian and bicycle opportunities along the bay, because we don't have any, no connections. So we would work with Millbrae to make that happen and achieve those goals. But what we're gonna, what our goal is, is to continue the good work that Erica's doing and work as partners as we move up and down the bayside and the coast side to try to get these improvements in. I don't know if I answered your question.
Does the charter constrain it to being a supporting agency, or is it, will it eventually become, is the ability to go direct it all the time?
You know, I, I just don't see that happening here. So Santa Clara Valley Water District, everybody talks about them, Golden Spigot. So I don't think anybody wants to replicate that model. We want something more along the lines of the San Francisco Creek JPA, where they basically have five staff members working on these projects. What they do is they... What they do is they leverage the Santa Clara Valley Water District for technical support in San Mateo County and the cities. The engineers all get together and talk about these things. And in that case, Santa Clara took that project out of bid and constructed it. One of the things about San Mateo County is there's a lot of smaller cities, and they're not putting out extremely large projects on a regular basis. And part of what this agency will do is to get that expertise and develop those staff members so that they're fluent in delivering tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars worth of projects along a bayfront. And really provide that expertise, but also leverage the city engineers to make sure that they're involved in these processes. I hope that answered that.
Well, actually.
Not really, it was close.
No, my question's really, literally about the charter and the powers that they, they have. And it sounds like...
So what, what's gonna happen is, we're gonna take, and I'm sort of jumping into Larry here, but we're gonna take the flood control district. It was created in 1959 by the Flood Control Act. It's in the Water Department of the State of California. We're gonna change the governing board to have a seven-member governing board, two board supervisors, five city council members. And they will essentially be a policy and decision-making body. So that group will have the authority to decide how many staff is coming in and what that charge is. So I think that will have the ability to really right-size the organization, for a better word, and make sure it fits San Mateo County.
But I, but I think your point, I guess, needs to be taken back because the more that the organizations see maintenance and operational responsibility over to this district for some of the facilities that are built, there is that danger that you guys ultimately take more control.
And, and our ability to control it normally would be to back out, and we really can't if we don't have people anymore. We're giving it away. It's, you know, yeah.
I'll stop talking here. So this has been a coalition of the willing. I like to call it a coalition of the willing. Our MOUs are coming in with people that want over. We have not run into a situation where, let's say Burlingame says, I just don't wanna do this, you know? So, I mean, we would have to learn how to address those types of issues. We would work on either side of Burlingame, but eventually you're gonna have a gap in your, in your, what am I looking for? Protection. You'll have a gap in the protection. I would imagine there might be some pressure from San Mateo and Milbrae who are gonna get flooded by Burlingame not acting. To say Burlingame, you might wanna play with us here, you know? But that would happen at a policy level and not a staff level.
I'll, I'll say it.
Rick had a question.
Actually, two comments. And they're fairly different. The first one is, I understand flood control district has existed since the 50s, and there's some disappointment with how effective it's been. And we're now transforming that organization to take on one of the biggest challenges that we have as a county, given the demographics of this county have, having both the coast side and the bayside, and the amount of financial exposure that we face from sea level rise. It's a really important issue for us to take on. I fully agree with that. I'd be much more interested in this if at the same time we were taking on the flood control in a serious way, which flood control is now totally localized, right?
Yeah, perhaps I can talk again. So the, the district...
Wait, let me just finish before you answer. So you just sat through the discussion of the Atherton Channel District. And you see in that discussion that we face a big issue, which is, you know, we're one of many creeks that flow into the bay. We'd like to clean up that water and manage that process. But we don't have a way to really get, I think effectively, the people who are parcel owners in that district to pay those costs. I, I don't know how we're gonna do it. I don't think we're gonna do it. And if we hadn't have put in, if we hadn't have stepped forward and borne the cost of fixing the channel to the benefit of those Channel District parcel owners, there, I think there would have been a big liability there, and it probably would have been borne by a lot of people. But I'd be much happier if this proposal were more comprehensive. I mean, I understand Mike's point about, you know, losing local control. And what I'm proposing would effectively mean we might lose more local control. But I frankly don't think we have the level of control we need to properly manage this flood control district. And it would be way better if the city, if the county were able to take that over.
Just a bit of history on the county flood control district. It was formed in 1959, pre Prop 13. And the way that the districts were formed, in fact, all of them in the Bay Area were formed in the 50s, just about that time. They were formed countywide, and I'll speak to San Mateo Counties. The district is countywide, but there are watersheds that are, we consider subzones, that have generated revenue. So we've got three subzones, Colma Creek, San Bruno Creek, and San Francisco Creek. The revenue that we receive from those subzones are parcel tax revenue from prior to Prop position 13 going into place. So up in Colma Creek, we generate about 3.2, 3.3 million a year. San Bruno Channel is about 200,000 a year. San Francisco Creek is about 250 to 300,000 a year. That is all the revenue we have. And the reason why the district is ineffective is because we don't have a funding source. So we have used on Colma Creek, the way that we've done improvements up there is we've leveraged that 3 million a year for debt service on bonds. So we've issued quite a few bonds up there to, to maintain and improve that channel. But you're right, you hit on a great point, because the key to this success of this agency is going to be long-term funding. And to take a step back, about three or four years ago, Supervisor Pine led an effort to try to develop a comprehensive water agency. We got feedback that perhaps we've, we've taken on more than we should. Bosco was concerned about groundwater management and water supply. There was just a bunch of issues that popped up. So we took a step back, and Supervisor Pine noticed that there were certain regional flooding issues that just weren't being addressed. Bayfront Canal is a good one. Five cities drained into there. No one was taking the lead, and Supervisor Pine wanted to get this going. And so that's when we created the flood resiliency program. The board put 6.2 million dollars towards working with the cities to work on these projects. And we've got these three MOU projects. If this agency is formed, I, I think that part of its charge will not only be sea level rise protection and coastal erosion, but also continuing to address these regional riverine flooding issues that really aren't being addressed right now. A lot of these creeks are on county, are on city borders. A lot of the creeks are borders. And so a lot of cities just haven't come together with the other cities to repair these things. They're very expensive projects, and frankly, the city staff members are very busy. They're just not doing this kind of work on a regular basis. And so what we're trying to do is to take a step back, really look at what's not being done in this county, and start addressing not only the sea level rise and erosion control protection on the shoreline, but also working with the cities to try to come up with solutions to their regional flooding projects, problems. We did get feedback from the cities that they would prefer us not working on their localized storm drain systems, and totally understandable, local control. But I think the intent is to try to address the gaps that you pointed out from the flood control district. It's ineffective because there really is no funding sources to do things countywide. And it, it really mirrors the discussion you had on your Channel District. It's the same, same concept. I'm sorry, Larry.
No, this is good.
So, so my second point is a governance point. So you have set up the board of the re-situated flood control district to be a seven-member board. And you chose for the five council members to be appointed by the CKAG board rather than the city select committee. Why did you do that? Now, there may be people that are involved. I mean, Elizabeth might be on the CKAG. But, I mean, most of us go on occasion to the city select committee process. So I think that involves more people actually participating. So there's more democracy at that level than there is from the CKAG board. And I wonder why you meant that.
When we talked about it, we started with the recommendation to use the city select committee. That was changed at the direction of the countywide water coordination committee. And that one thing that...
The countywide water coordination.
That's, that's the CKAG Subcommittee on Water. That's, that's who the staff advisory team was really reporting to.
So wait, so you guys proposed, the city select committee and the CKAG board said, no, it should be the CKAG board.
No, we, we just, the way it started, we had it, what I termed a supposal. We basically put some of these concepts out just to let people push on them a little bit, right? Well, part of the feedback we got was that there was a challenge between, should we have a 21-member board on this new agency, or should we have something smaller? And the idea of the CKAG board, 21 members, appointing the five city members that would represent the county from the city side, was kind of that place that it arrived at. So it was really trying to balance keeping 21 cities involved, which is not always the case with city select committee, and, and also then trying to have a committee that's small enough that you can actually get some work done at a fairly technical level.
But to Rick's point, as well as Bill's point earlier, the board members are, in essence, it's a political role versus a member agency. And therefore, a small jurisdiction like us in Colma, Hellsborough, and others may never be on that board position role unless it's part of the process that, that seven members, two of those member cities have to be smaller jurisdictions. There has to, because we're not Daly City, we're not San Mateo. So, you know, our issue to anybody else is, are you kidding?
Yeah, if it's South County, Woodside, Atherton, Portola Valley, just, we're not representing it's Woodside or Meadow Park.
Yeah, and, and quite honestly, like, just, we just recently had an MTC vote, okay? And I got calls from supervisors pushing certain cities who are the larger cities that have more votes, because they're interested in their career as well. And I think that that's unfair. We never get in. And, and, you know, we pay our fair share. So I think it should have something where rotated and everybody gets a shot.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's, we've agreed, we'll take that back and, and bring it forward because it, like I said, it's a parallelism on the coast side.
Yeah, it is.
And one way you've tried to address that was putting the District Three Supervisor as one of the members.
But you've addressed the coast side by creating a coast side council position, which, there's lots of committees where there's just a north, south, and central county position. And, and I think you're right, the coast side does end up with the short stick.
Well, and so much of it is unincorporated. So really that made sense in terms of trying to shape the, the board in that way. So, so we'll, we'll carry back this concern that without some rotation of positions, and I will tell you, the feedback I know we'll get from some is, well, if we're constantly rotating the positions, then we're not getting the experience we need on that board for the types of things that they're going to be acting on. And that will be the balance that somehow has to be, has to be.
I mean, your answer about the CKAG board being 22 versus the city select committee was a good answer. I'm just not familiar with the CKAG board. I have never participated with that.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll carry that back. And I, I think the concern about the, what are the limits to the authority that might be authorized this new agency are also good points that we'll, we'll take back. I'll just continue on and stop at any time, because this has been a really good discussion. It's, we're talking about a three-year startup, and, and it's been a little bit difficult sometimes to explain. We've had this process where we were developing the proposal. And so if you look maybe at the, the next chart, I think it is. So, so we had a part of Russell, which is developing the proposal that could be considered by the cities and the county. With the endorsement of the board of supervisors and CKAG, we're now moving into the city endorsement and agreements about funding the startup of the agency, not the agency as a whole, but to basically try to get it through to a point where we've identified that there's a viable, ongoing funding source that will support this agency and that there's support around the county to basically, with some clarity about what we're going to do. Because part of this startup process is, is really public engagement, but also doing a, a flood and sea level rise investment plan. Like I think Tim was saying earlier, if you don't know exactly what you're trying to fund, it's hard to define how much funding you need. And so there is, in this first three-year period, the completion of a flood and sea level rise investment plan and the development of both the public education process and outreach process heading towards probably some combination of potential funding mechanisms that will sustain this organization in support of the local jurisdiction. Funding breakdown is basically 50% county, 50% cities. Of the county's portion, they would contribute 350,000 to the startup effort and 400,000 toward the MOU services that are currently being provided through Erica's group. The flood control district funding would remain unchanged. That's the 3.8 million that Jim talked about. But also, there's a million and a half that's collected for CKAG for the work in that February and CKAG does in the stormwater quality area. So, so that's kind of the starting point. So 1.1 million dollars for the starter part of the process, with cities paying that, remaining 750,000. The idea is that we'd give ideally all 21 cities to participate, and that we would have a relatively modest requirement. It's actually tiered, so that Atherton would be on the lower tier and would provide $25,000 a year for three years for the startup process. Cities like Daly City and San Mateo would get the $55,000 level. And now, in these times, nothing is modest. But the attempt was to try to keep the dollar amount at a level where it could be fit within each agency's budget, given the difference in size of the budgets and the opportunities that there are to fund it. But to provide this ongoing effort, it's really going to need at least this level of effort. And the thought was for each year, for three years, to try to get this up and off the ground is a reasonable request. You will all be, you'll be the judge of that ultimately.
So it, it, it must, that's how it would go. But if we said, or any jurisdiction said, Portola Valley, I'm not interested, now what happens?
We've had a lot of discussion about this. And so the, the concept is that the flood control district is a countywide entity, and that the thought is that that boundary would remain. The question is, would all of those who are within that boundary actually pay their share? And it's conceivable that some may not. I will be candid, I don't think we have a clear and concise answer to the question. The task I've been assigned is to try to get the information out so people can feel confident and join into the process as opposed to opting out, because it does make it much more complicated.
Yeah, because we, you know, we ran into that when we were talking about our flood district. And we want a funding, things like that, even for the water capture facility. And as you did, you know, that Bayfront Canal thing, certain jurisdictions that contribute water said, well, we're not gonna participate.
Yeah, we're interested, because we tested some of that as we went through the committee process and, and the, and in the outreach that we had to the local jurisdictions. And at least the feedback that we had from the elected officials who participated and the staff that participated was that everyone saw the need, and especially when you put the overlay of regional stormwater requirements coming from the regional board into the mix, and potential maintenance into the mix, that agencies felt that there was gonna be something there for them. Where we are in endorsement, endorsement process, as I mentioned, the CKAG board endorsed on January 10th, and the board of supervisors on the 29th. South San Francisco has endorsed the plan, and they did it at their annual planning meeting. So they'll be submitting an adopted resolution in support of that, that they, they have the council's support to move forward. And I've been in the process of scheduling meetings with all the remaining cities. I thank you for being early on the schedule, because the schedule is getting more complicated the later it gets. But we'll, we'll be meeting with each individual agency between probably, looks like now February, today, and April, probably the second meeting for most councils in April. So hopefully, then the intent is by the end of April, we could get back to everyone and confirm that we have support and from whom.
So is there a dashboard that we can look at to see when the people...
Yeah, Erica has been kind of managing a webpage. It's, it's an interwebpage.
Yeah, it's resilienceamateo.org. And it's on the back of your executive summary. If not, it's... If not, it's...
Yeah, we just wanna know how our neighbors...
Yeah, so if you go to the website and go to resources, it's a very simple website. It's very clear. Under resources, you will see all the meetings. So as a meeting comes up, we're scheduling, we're listing it on there, so you know other opportunities to listen and participate.
And I'll be preparing some notes from tonight's meeting about what we heard, so we can provide that feedback into the mix. I don't know if we'll end up putting all of that on the webpage, probably not, because the meeting's gonna be happening so quickly, I don't think we'll be able to keep up with it, but...
I would recommend, if you don't mind, maybe the CKAG Countywide Water Committee, is a public meeting?
Yes, and we, that meeting is this Friday, and we are giving regular updates about this process and feedback that we're hearing, you being the first after South San Francisco. So I think we can keep that conversation going as we kind of move forward through the different meetings. What we're asking for from each agency is endorsement of the proposal and an agreement to fund the first three years of its formation. So I've provided staff with a draft resolution and material that can be carried forward. That's being provided to each of the agencies in the same language, other than changes in the dollar amounts, and town versus cities, and things like that. The basic resolution is the same, and the thought is, we'd like to have those as soon as we can obtain them. We also definitely wanna know if this, if a town or any council is really not prepared to support it. That's something we need to know early on as well. So we're hoping to get that feedback. We have folks working on the legislation, and that part of what they will need is acknowledgement that there is support within the county for the legislators to move forward with the required bill. So that's what we're after with the resolution portion.
Just to make it, you're gonna go back to the committee, and you're gonna say, "These are the things I heard from Atherton."
Yes.
And, as well as these other jurisdictions. And, you know, of course, we've asked some questions, and we have some concerns, so, you know, I'm not speaking for my colleagues, but, you know, if I asked about how you're gonna make sure you get somebody, you know, us to get somebody on the council, or on the board, or, you know, how are we gonna control the agency? Are you gonna put that into the charter? We kind of would like to see that. Actually, did you reject it, or did you put it in, and how that's going to be before, perhaps, before one colleague or another might choose to cast a vote, yea or nay? And so I understand you're on a quick turntable, right? But we also wanna know, you heard our feedback, you're taking our feedback back, but whether or not it gets rejected and listened to might help with vote yea or nay.
So I think the, so broadcasting information probably will be hard to do, given the sequence of things, but I can make the commitment to work with your city manager and give that feedback about kind of what happened at this or subsequent water committee meetings, and what actions might be taken or committed to being taken. There's a little bit of this ambiguity, because there is no agency, right? So there's no board, and so we're kind of dealing with the CKAG Board and the board of supervisors as the two parts of this puzzle, so I think we have to kind of give that feedback to both the CKAG Board and the board of supervisors as we move through. And so your comments from tonight, I'll run them by George before I even send them on, just so I get it correctly.
I don't know, you're herding cats.
Yeah.
But you're used to that. Any other questions?
Larry, as you take the governance issue back, you've got a seven-member board with a number of other types of agencies that are countywide, perhaps there's an opportunity as well to have advisory committees or subtax and things like that.
Yes.
Council members who don't have an opportunity to serve on the board might be able to participate in some other way.
Yeah, and I think that could be part of the feedback about possible options of what might be done. There is a, there is a stormwater technical advisory committee that already exists at the Public Works Centers. I think Robert's been participating for some time. They have a subset, which is on just stormwater. That might be a way of getting the technical side kind of plugged in, but the kind of broader feedback from the elected officials is something that could be talked about in terms of structuring this.
And so we operate the Flood Control District. In the Colma Creek Subzone, we have a, it's called an advisory committee. It's basically city council members from South City, Pacifica, Colma, Brisbane, and there's some at-large seats from residents. So that model is already being used in our Flood Control District right now, so we can bring that feedback back as well, and make sure that that philosophy is discussed.
Yeah, as Erica was saying, we've kind of envisioned, as a handy way of getting people on the same page, this MOU process that she's been using with the Flood Resiliency Program as one mechanism to do that. That brings the cities and their city councils and staff into the loop as well. So I think we can certainly see the models that are already out there to accomplish that much, and you've decided that's enough to provide the confidence that you need.
I'm not sure I understand what the next steps would be. Let's say we endorsed and we approved, what would, when would we hear from you next? What would be the next thing?
So what we're gonna be doing is, with these meetings, we're going to, basically, you'll know when the meetings are occurring. We will have adopted resolutions, which is the action that people take, and I think that's something that we can publish, right? Because they will have taken a formal action with the council. For tonight, you're not there, and so we would not be doing that. If you take action on a resolution, either in support or in opposition, that's something where we would then start to show the agencies that are opting in.
But from our standpoint, let's say we do that, are we then waiting for six months while the people get their act together?
No, waiting six months, but I can tell you that we're into April in terms of trying to get to all the cities, the 21 cities in the county, to basically, to be able to get that, just on the calendars.
Yeah.
But there's an actual legislative change that's required.
Right, so we're working with the county's lobbying group to determine when we're going to go to the state legislature for this change. And Larry, do you know any, I don't know the details on how it's been worked out.
Well, there are two steps in the process. One is that they kind of have to announce that there could be a bill. The second is, toward the end of this month, they then have to have the language to be able to submit on a regular bill. There are two ways to do it, though. One is with legislation, the other is part of the budget, if there is urgency attached to what we're doing. So there's some uncertainty about which process is gonna be used. We're gonna be meeting with both Jerry Hill and Kevin Mullins' offices this Friday to try to have a conversation about where we are with that process. But that would then be a legislative process that would not conclude before probably June, before their summer recess, I suspect. So that's kind of going on in parallel, and again, we won't know for sure, because if it doesn't go on the fast track, it may be a full year before we actually get that resolved. And right now, the hope is, I certainly know Supervisor Pine has been anxious to see this concluded in July, that the legislature will do what the legislature does, and so we'll just have to see how that goes.
So Mark Furman is our... Mark Furman is, as well as Member Park, so you might want to...
Good point.
Larry, and also the CKAG Board and the Countywide Water Committee will be providing updates to them on a regular basis, and they meet monthly.
Yeah.
So either they, you know, a week before, there's a packet that has all the information, so any updates will be in that packet if you don't have them.
Maybe, George, we could loop you into that package, just so you get the agenda and the materials being provided to them.
Any other questions for Larry?
Thank you. This is just a study session, so we can't make a decision, unless we don't have one of our...
All right, I appreciate that. And if I could just know if and when you're going to bring it forward for action, that'd be very helpful.
Thank you.
And we'd be happy to be there if it's helpful. If you have more questions, or you wanna hear some response to the questions that you've already asked, we'd be happy to come back and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Thanks, Jim.
Always good. Most of you doing good, Jerry?